All rise, Councilman Fosleton is going to do a prayer and then remain rising. Then we'll do a closing. Councilman?
Lord God, we come before you tonight as humbly as we can, and we ask your blessing upon this city. We are thankful and grateful for the ability to gather democratically and come to the resolution of our issues and differences and further our cause. We ask for peace where there is uncertainty. We ask for calm where there is fear. And we ask for unity where there is division and indecision. And we ask for your wisdom as we conduct the business of this city and our community. Amen.
Amen. (inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, thank you very much. All in attendance, we have called the order. We will now do a roll call.
Callers?
Here.
Allen?
Here.
Fosleton?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
And Peter?
Present.
Lester?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
Neely?
Present.
Thomas?
Present.
Youngs?
Present.
And a quarter.
All right, item three, adoption of the agenda.
Second.
You got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
It's the same.
Item four, miscellaneous agenda items. Item four A, we have the honor to recognize a very important person in our community, Chief Wolden. Turn it over to you.
I'd like to introduce Mr. Dominique Harrison to the City Council this evening, and I'm very happy and proud to be able to recognize him for his extraordinary courage and swift action during a terrifying and dangerous incident on the evening of May 15th of this year. Shortly before 8:00 PM, a young child was violently attacked in our community by two aggressive dogs in the 1,000 block of Jackson Street. As emergency responders were en route and the situation remained chaotic and dangerous, Mr. Harrison, hearing cries from his front porch, immediately rushed toward the scene without hesitation and without regard for his own safety. Upon discovering the child being attacked, Mr. Harrison acted instinctively and selflessly. With only a walking cane provided by a bystander, he confronted the aggressive animals, managing to strike them back long enough to lift the injured child to safety and carry him to a nearby home. His quick decision-making and bravery helped save the child's life and prevent further injury. In the words of Mr. Harrison himself from the news, "Somebody had to do something." His words and his actions embody the very spirit of community relationships, community responsibility, compassion, and heroism. For his fearless intervention and decisive efforts to protect a vulnerable child, Dominique Harrison is hereby commended by the Jefferson City Police Department for his actions. His actions serve as a powerful reminder that courage is not the absence of fear, but the willingness to act in the face of it. Thank you, Mr. Harrison, for being a true neighborhood hero.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna... (applause) I do have an official commendation from the police department that said, Jefferson City Police Department certifies that the chief of police has awarded a certificate of commendation to Dominique Harrison for his selfless and fearless intervention and decisive actions to protect a vulnerable child in our community. Thank you again very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Make any comments? We are so proud of you and for what you've done. You represent our community well.
Appreciate everybody. Appreciate the award, my family, my friends. That's about it, really. Yeah. Appreciate the award, though. Yeah.
If you don't mind, we're gonna invite you and the chief and anyone else that you would like to come up front. We'll do a quick picture. Council will kind of get behind us and then we'll move along. Anyone you'd like in the picture, you're going to watch. (inaudible) You got to be surprised. Big crowd.
Yeah. So, yeah.
quickly about our upcoming Slute to America. Welcome. I know you've been really busy the last couple of months.
Yeah, for sure.
About July 3rd, 4th, 5th, and destinations beyond.
So, starting off, the 3rd, Molly has been working tirelessly to get everything organized for a free community concert to help us start the celebrations for our wonderful city's birthday. And then, from there, I'll let her talk about that. She knows all the details. But for Slute to America, we're gonna start the day at 2:00 with a motocross show. We have several members of the community who have came together to sponsor a show down on Broadway in front of St. Peter's Church. A gentleman, Mr. Terry, is going to come along with a couple of his family members and do a couple of shows throughout the day with some minor jumps, nothing too crazy. We're not jumping buses or anything like that, but just to show everybody just a little bit about that, kind of stress the safety requirements of riding dirt bikes and add a little bit of education to a well-loved summer activity. And then, we also have The Market Place, as well as Mighty Machines, that are gonna be around that same time. We have several area businesses, as well as the National Guard and the city, who have kindly donated some equipment and vehicles for everybody to be able to look around at. We'll have the city buses to be able to cool off because, as usual, it's probably gonna be a pretty warm one. We have our car crews, and we are going to be having the kids home this year. It's gonna be moved to the press parking lot right directly in front of the Capitol with some bounce houses. That way, the whole family can be right front stage to see our Birds of Prey and all the other happenings on the Capitol main stage. We have a number of bands. I invite you guys all to go to our socials and to the website. Our biggest thing that we are working towards right now to get closer to the fourth and to hopefully make it a very fun and seamless day for all of the city and everybody who comes in to visit us is we are looking for volunteers. We have information on our website. I have some flyers in the back here that have a QR code for anybody who would like to volunteer. We get you some snacks and water. You get a cool T-shirt. And we could really use community hands to help us, to help us run bounce houses, to make sure we keep those safe, to make sure that people are finding their ways to the different attractions, helping out our vendors if they need a bag of ice, letting them be able to use the restroom without being concerned about their goods being walking away or anything like that. But from there, we are ready for a fantastic year. We have a lot of really great stuff put together. We have a lot of great acts and great vendors who are coming back this year because they just love spending time with us on the 4th of July.
I wanted to get back to July 3rd real quick. As you indicated, we are sponsoring a free concert for the community, members only. I understand it's a family-friendly 80s, 90s rock band. I think, Mr. Grandfrot, there's other things planned at the amphitheater, other activities going on. Am I speaking maybe?
No, I think there are some activities by Molly, so we're on the committee. She can answer that.
Yeah, so we're gonna have members only. It's an 80s tribute band. As a headliner, we'll have local Bobby showers do a warm-up act. We're gonna have some big banners and balloon artists out there for kids. We'll have some craft tables, colors, bubbles, all the fun stuff, so parents can just bring a lawn chair. Venue Works is gonna have their concessions for sale. They will have beer. I know it's a selling point for some people. So, you can bring your family out, bring a lawn chair. If you haven't been to the amphitheater in Jefferson City, which I'm amazed at how many people haven't been to an amphitheater, this is a great free way to...
And hopefully, the community knows this is our 200th year, so we're kind of using this event to kick off about a four-month celebration of our 200th anniversary, which is officially on November 7th. So, there'll be activities kind of sprinkled throughout that four months. Air Show is gonna kind of do some things in September, so come out and join us. It's a great time. And Fire in the Sky fireworks at 9:45?
Yes, sir.
Fireworks in central Missouri?
That's what we're told, and we strive for it every year. And we'll have the music ready for it on Nash 101.5, I think is what they're going for, or is it, might be KPLA this year, they have decided. But regardless, we're gonna have the music. And there might be an appearance of the birthday song, maybe, hopefully. If not, we're definitely going to have someone help us start that and get a nice, good, loud one going while we have to do fireworks.
Thanks very much.
Thank you for your time, everyone.
All right, that takes us to our final opportunity for public comment. I think we have a number of...
Well, it looks like everyone signed up under public hearing. Is there anyone that wanted to have public comment not related to the public hearing? Or is it all related to the public?
Okay. All right, and we will jump to item six, the public hearing. We have the rezoning of 80 acres of the Walnut Hills subdivision. Mr. Smith?
Go ahead. Rebuild first. That's okay. In order to the city of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the city of Jefferson by rezoning 804 acres located on the 3800 block of Rock Ridge Road from RU Rural to PUD planned unit development and approving a preliminary PUD plan and preliminary subdivision plat of Walnut Hills subdivision.
Yeah, Mr. Smith?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just to recap, so this project is a rezoning, kind of a three-part project rezoning, preliminary PUD plan, which is essentially a site plan that council will be approving or reviewing and considering tonight, and then that preliminary plat, which is very similar to that PUD plan. So, I'll keep my presentation a little shorter than the first reading of this. There will be a public hearing. The applicants do have representatives here that will speak during that public hearing and then go over their presentation on the project in greater detail. But I'll go through and recap just a few things I think that are worth mentioning from, I think, from our hiring meeting. Again, about an 80-acre project, looking to develop the site with 230 single-family lots and units. It would have connections to the adjacent property to the north through Leeds Drive and then on the west through Southampton Drive. You can see the property there. You can see the grades on that site, so there is some area in there that was identified through a engineering study that there could be potential floodplain within that property, and that's been provided to the applicant. They have addressed that within their development plan. Kind of a quick overview of the layout. You can see really the kind of the open space there really speaks to some of the challenges they have with the grades and that stormwater. So, there's a lot of area there that'll be left for that stormwater and as open space. And they're really designing around that site, trying to, you know, keep that in the areas away from that and create as few, I think, possibilities for stormwater issues to a minimum as much as possible. So, a few things to really, I think, highlight with this project is, it is a PUD, and the PUD allows for some new and different and flexible type zoning requests for approaches to housing. So, part of this one would be a reduction from minimum lot size from 6,000, which is kind of our standard RS4, which is kind of our most dense single-family residential district, down to 4,000 square feet. Minimum lot width from 50 feet to 38 feet. Side yard setbacks, so the distance between the side now are basically the side lot lines, from seven feet to five feet, and reduction on the rear setback from 25 to 15 feet. And I note that these exceptions or design kind of exceptions, what we've called them, associated with PUD, really are really gonna apply to some of the smaller lot areas. So, it's really not going to impact the entire development. I think it's probably roughly about a third of the site would take use of some of these reduced setbacks and reduced lot width. Another thing that came out as well was stormwater, so I want to take a second. It's a little hard to see, maybe on the development plan, but there are five stormwater basins that are preliminarily designed with this project. And I say preliminarily because at this stage, this is a preliminary PUD, so they have not produced detailed engineering drawings for that stormwater plan, although they have provided preliminary information on how they're gonna accomplish and how they're gonna meet the city's stormwater regulation requirements. So, once they are ready to move ahead to the final plat, the final PUD, they will have to submit those detailed engineering drawings, at which point staff would review those in detail to make sure they are compliant with all of our stormwater regulations. And generally, and I'm speaking here not as an engineer, but who has a little bit understanding of stormwater codes, essentially, the stormwater code is going to require that they really capture a lot of the runoff that's being created from the addition of impervious surfaces. So, there's an amount of runoff that occurs now. Essentially, the stormwater regulations are gonna ask that they don't increase any of that runoff beyond what occurs as it is right now. Kind of going back again to the variance and the design kind of adjustments they're asking for on the site, and I mentioned kind of the smaller lots. So, this is the area, kind of this brighter green is for the smaller lots. One thing I'd point your attention to is, that's the Lot A. So, you can see that they do list a minimum of 4,370 square feet for a lot. But overall, for all those lots, the average is a little closer to 5,000 square feet. So, that might be the minimum. There's gonna be some of those A lots that are bigger than the minimum. So, really, they're probably taking advantage of, you know, maybe half or two-thirds of those to really go down to the smaller lot size and smaller widths. I'd also point out that what they're asking for is a reduction from 50 feet of lot width down to 38 feet. We have a provision right now for duplexes, so that's two units to be on a lot that is 60 feet wide. And it does allow essentially that duplex then to be separated into two separate lots that would have one unit on each for 30-foot-wide lots for that duplex. So, we have provisions within our code right now that individuals can build, basically attach buildings on a lot that's 60 feet wide with two units. So, this is a giant departure from what we do allow now. And we actually, just last year, through some of our zoning regulation changes, that was actually restricted to only two units that could be built on those 30-foot-wide lots if they're attached, but we've increased that to six. So, we didn't have really an allotment for what you would consider to be that townhome-style housing. And increasing that from two to six is actually allowing the development of those types of units, or would allow that. And so, that is a 30-foot-wide lot. So, again, the 38-foot-wide is not such a departure, I think, from what is permitted. It's also not a departure from a lot of the areas that you see in the older parts of town. We have many lots that are 40 foot wide in those areas. And so, those are developable by our standards as long as they can meet our current requirements. And we touched on a little bit in addition to some of the requirements or some of the conditions that they have agreed to as far as meeting with the residents and addressing some of those concerns. They're putting the landscape along the boundary of this, where it is funding the Covington Garden subdivision. And we looked at these, this is just kind of some of the schematics to help you envision kind of what could be built on those narrower lots with the reduced side yard setbacks. So, you know, I think we're a little bit trained to expect that a single-family home needs to be a certain size and a two-car garage. This is something that provides more range and more flexibility for first-time homebuyers. So, it's something that isn't quite as big. It has one-car garage, but it's gonna open up, I think, the possibilities and the opportunities for homeownership here. So, that's the smaller, that's the A size, that's the B, and the C, I believe. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on this project. It did go through the planning and zoning. It did receive a positive recommendation with a vote of seven to eleven. Happy to answer any questions, and I do know the applicant is here, ready to also provide a presentation.
Any, Councilman, Alers?
I just wanted to... Clip, there's on the bottom of that hill where I see is a sewer, the sewer treatment plant, that'll service that area?
Correct, yeah. I believe that's a sewer pump station. Yeah, upon review, there wasn't any capacity concerns with that site. So, they would be able to...
When was that? You know when that was put in, or how long ago that was?
I don't...
Nineties?
I don't recall that off the top of my head.
Councilman Neely?
I don't have any questions right now, but will council be able to ask questions after the public hearing?
Okay.
Could the development team tell me more about the design standard for the detention basins? And I heard you say there were five. So, are there five basins or five different designs?
There are five different basins within the subdivision. And there's actually an existing pond that will remain too, that will also accommodate some of the stormwater. So, five designed, one existing pond, so you can say that there are actually six locations for accommodating that.
And you talked about, or is part of the design standard including like a rain garden?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't believe in... So, I don't think that's part of the current requirement. As far as the final design goes, I don't know if they've gotten into that level of detail, whether they would design it in such a fashion. I don't believe our requirements require any type of native planning in that regard.
So, is the typical, I mean, would it just be like a...
Mr. Smith, would it make sense to have the applicant maybe address that question?
It could, yeah. They probably have a little bit more information, but again, they may not have gotten into the final design for that either.
Okay, that's fine.
If you had any comment on what those typically look like, but...
A typical detention pond or dry pond is normally, if that's what they ultimately end up proposing, but is a piece of ground that is normally dry, but when it rains, it fills up and slowly releases the water from the science. They're to match the pre-existing condition release rate after...
I'm the world's worst at this, but I would encourage all of us to speak up because I can't hear you all, and I'm sure the audience can't, and they may not be able to hear me. So, anyway, just speak up.
Councilman White?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Timeline for traffic study, at what point will we see that through this process?
So, traffic study would need to be submitted. Typically, they would submit that along with their final design plans. They could do it earlier, but essentially, it would be a requirement to have that completed and submitted to staff for review prior to, I think, having any type of infrastructure plans approved. Because if there are any design recommendations or improvements recommended through that traffic impact study, it would need to be reflected in any type of plan they have. So, there's not necessarily a timeframe. It just depends on when they're ready to move forward to that final stage of actually submitting the final plan. So, and that typically is an administrative review, but this would come back through planning, zoning, and council again for that final review, and it could be attached to that.
All right. Well, the public hearing is open. The applicant is here, so would someone like to speak on behalf of the applicant? You have up to 10 minutes. If you could identify yourself.
Thank you very much, Mayor, council members. My name is Jeanne Allmiller. I'm president of McBride Homes, and I am so excited to be here tonight to present our latest project. And we have a team here that can help answer questions, particularly the stormwater question that we'll get to in my presentation. But we have Katie Peruca, who's with our land development team and does a lot of our due diligence with us, and Mike Faulkner, who's with Sterling Engineering. They're our engineer on the project, so he'll be able to answer more of those detailed stormwater questions as they come up. I just want to express our sincere gratitude for being invited to participate in this community. It's been a bit of a journey, so... But I want to also express that we are not just a St. Louis builder. We are actually the largest builder in the state of Missouri. We closed and constructed with homeowners 1,008 homes last year. We're the largest union homebuilder in the country. And we, although we're headquartered in St. Louis County, we build in a lot of other areas besides St. Louis County. We're currently building in St. Louis County, of course, Jefferson County, Franklin County, Warren County, Phelps County, Crawford County. We have recently received approval for projects in the city of Ralla. We develop several projects in the city of Washington, Pacific, Eureka, Union, and most recently Cuba, we received approval for a project. So, we're very excited. We believe there's a lot of interest in this market to bring a community, particularly a community with a lot of different options for folks. So, just a... I already talked about McBride. There's been a good overview so far about the site, but we were approached and really met with the Jefferson City Regional Economic Partnership to look for a site to provide housing in the city. And so, we were very excited to select this site and met with, I had a lot of meetings on this, which I'll describe as we move forward. I'm gonna kind of skip through these aerial slides because I think we're all oriented to the site, and we'll talk about the site plan in just a minute. Just to sort of kick us off about the project features, this is 230 single-family detached lots. None of these are attached. This is all fee simple. Everybody's gonna own their lot and own their home. And they're separate, we're segregating into three distinct residential villages, and I'll talk about those products in a second. What's great about offering three different product lines is if you do a community with 230 of the same-sized lots, the same-sized product, what you see on a resale market is you tend to bring the values a little bit down, right? Because if you have three different price points, three different products, that creates a thriving community. It creates a community where you're not competing on price point against 229 other lots. So, you have a diversity of housing options, and it actually helps raise property values as you move forward. It also provides a lot of flexibility for folks looking for different product lines. We're gonna install new public streets, utilities, and sidewalks. As you heard in the previous staff report, a lot of this site has been preserved as open green space. Forty-five percent of the property, actually almost 37 acres of the 8-acre site, is gonna be preserved as common ground in this project. You can kind of see, when you look at the site plan, the point of the PUD, which is flexibility in design. All the common ground will be uniformly maintained by the HOA. We have a lot of buffers and landscaping built in. We've kind of heard already what it's zoned, and what we're seeking tonight is the planned unit development. The city's master plan supports this type of development. To recap, we have had a Zoom meeting with the neighbors on April 29th. We heard a lot of comments about landscaping and buffers at that meeting, so I want to go over the changes that we made after that meeting. We added additional common ground buffer adjacent to our neighbors after that meeting, and we added an additional 112 trees plantings along that buffer as well after that meeting. We've talked to all the stakeholders, all the utility providers, the schools, and no issues there. All seem to have capacity and are excited about the project. Just to describe, these are all single-family detached homes with full basements, three distinct villages. I'll go through the products in a second. Each home product has multiple floor plans, multiple elevations. So, you're never gonna see the same house with the same elevation, the same colors. We actually at McBride believe in a little bit of diversity in architecture, so we don't want the same house built right next to each other. But they're all very complimentary. These include open, modern floor plans, large kitchen islands, walk-in pantries, fully-sided yards, and landscaping is all part of the package. You've seen these, but this is the Arbor Series. This is on the 38-foot lots, wide lots. These are full basements. These are full basements, one-car garage, and a very unique price point for people who are just starting out their careers, maybe somebody that's downsizing, or with a smaller family. This is the Bayside Series. This is a two-car garage, full basement. This is a very, very popular series. We built this in all the counties I described before, and it is, ranges, you can go up to four bedrooms in this product, so very nice, flexible design, lots of different floor plans between ranches and two stories here. So a lot of options. You can see a lot of different elevations for the customer to choose as well. The Oakwood Series is a move-up product. There is, you can see one home on there that we can put on these lots with a three-car garage, but most of these are two-car garages. Larger home, there's even an option for a owner's suite on the first floor here. So these typically have three to four bedrooms, three to four bathrooms, again, full basement. Interiors, you can see our interiors emphasize entertaining on the first floor, wide open spaces connecting the living spaces to the kitchen area for big parties, lots of walk-in pantries, lots of larger closets, really functional for the family and entertaining. Our award-winning design studio, 10,000 square feet, right next to our headquarters in Chesterfield. All buyers who don't choose like a spec home or a market home would have the option, would go through our studio. Because of the location and proximity, we're going to offer some Zoom options perhaps for buyers. We want them to at least come in once to kind of experience it. It's very fun. We make it fun. We make it really cool to choose your investment options in your home and to make those selections. So we want them to come in at least once, but the other appointments, we might consider doing Zoom options for these customers. Just to kind of summarize, this is 230 single-family for-sale homes. Again, very large incorporation of common ground, 45% of the site, green space, preservation of natural features. Again, we added additional landscaping after meeting with our neighbors after that meeting, complies with the city's comprehensive plan. So I know there was a question about the traffic study, which will be submitted as part of the improvement plans, as we heard from staff previously. And the planning and zoning did recommend eight-to-one, and we're asking for your favorable approval tonight on the legislation before you. Before I sit down, I want to ask Mike Faulkner to come up and answer your question, council member, about the detention basins.
Thank you, Jeanne. For the record, my name is Mike Faulkner. I'm vice president of Sterling Engineering, offices at 5055 New Baumgartner in St. Louis, 63129. To address your comments, we're going to have, what we're going to propose is what we call a stacked basin. What a stacked basin is, is it holds the water, it becomes a detention basin. It does several facets. It will actually hold the water, causes volume reduction for the impervious area, and then it also has a bio cell located in it. So what we're doing is we're collecting the water, we're holding the water until the storm events go by, which is what the main purpose is. But we also have the water quality part facet of that basin that's there. And what it does is it actually cleanses the water that meets the new requirements that EPA and DNR requires us to do. So we're going to act, proposing these basins in these, and plus what we also did, whenever we go into a development, we look at all the tributary areas, we look at those, we analyze that water, because stormwater is a very big facet that we need to look at. And the other facet that we do is, we look at that water, how much water is coming down? We want to know how high is that water when we have a major storm event? Plus, the staff provide us with the information that they had. We looked at that along with the information that we had, so we make sure that what we're proposing in stormwater meets and exceeds city requirements. I hope I answered your question, but in a nutshell, that's what we're proposing.
So can you kind of describe what that looks like? Like, is it like something that you dig in and like put a liner in, or is it like a natural, or what?
Yeah, it would actually just be a grassed area, but I have a section of it that will have some bio plantings that will be in there that will actually act as the water cleansing of it. But what you'll see is some landscaping around it, but basically just a grassed area.
Mike, it looks very natural, right?
Yes, very natural.
Thank you. I just want to conclude by...
I just wanted to add one more question to that. Thank you for the explanation. Thank you so much. But will the storm drains for this new development join into the existing storm drain system, or will there be a separate? Did I miss that?
These will all be new stormwater. We'll be collecting all the surface water and discharging it into those basins, and then each one of those basins will discharge into that natural stream. We have two tributaries that run through our site.
Thank you. I just want to conclude by expressing our sincere gratitude. Thank you very much. We realize this is a huge opportunity. We're here to answer any questions from you, from the public, but we're very excited about this opportunity. Thank you very much. And thank you for the, to the community, you all and staff for all the preparation and input you've given. Thank you.
Let me check, are there any other questions for the applicant? Did you have your hand up? Counselor Lester, then I saw Counselor Mealy, and Counselor woman Allen.
To the extent possible, will you be using local materials, local contractors in the construction of these homes?
That's a great question. Thank you for asking. As we've expanded out, out the 44 corridor, and we're actually looking at a project in St. Genevieve right now, and they asked the same question, we are very much interested in finding and partnering with local trades and contractors as part of our mission to expand our reach in Missouri. So yes, we are very interested in that. We've done things like hosting days at our corporate office. I know it's a little bit of a drive, but we can, you can meet and greet with our purchasing department. We can review insurance requirements and things like that. Those things have been very successful. And out towards Ralla, which we've now zoned, we've been able to find a lot of new vendors and a lot of new contractors. So that is the goal, is to meet new people, find new vendors, find new contractors, and work with them. Yes.
Counselor New?
Thank you, Mayor. Back to the retention basins.
Yes.
The retention basins get, is it my understanding that they get to a certain point and then they connect to stormwater for overflow?
Yes.
Okay. And that will be connection to the existing stormwater infrastructure in that area?
Well, right now, the existing infrastructure is just the two tributaries that run through. We will not be putting any stormwater in any of the existing subdivisions or any of the systems that are in the adjoining subdivisions. This will all be pretty much contained within the development.
Understood. So how, what's the length of travel for this stormwater to the tributary?
We'll be picking up all of the, and we'll be working with staff as far as what your criteria is, as far as how far we can, we can do it as far as the design requirements of the storm systems, but we'll be collecting all of that based on your city standards. So it's really hard to address that question because how far we run the stormwater in the street, and then it'll be picked up based on the amount of surface water and the queues that are coming through. We'll try to strategically set where those inlets are to make sure that we don't have a lot of water, so it becomes erosive in the swales and the backyards. We'll be picking up all of that water based on a overall design that we'll have, that will have each individual drainage area of this larger drainage area. It'll be broken into several smaller drainage areas that we'll pick up and then filter all that into the storm system underground and divert it to the storm detention basins.
What tributary are you in?
There's two. If I, if we can put up the map up there, we can show it to you. It's kind of hard. See, there's actually two. There's one that's coming from the north, I guess, speed to northeast, heading south, and then there's one that's coming pretty much straight down. Those are the two main tributaries into the site. And then there's a small little one that goes over towards that little lake that's over on the western, or eastern side of the site.
Can staff tell us what tributaries those are? I don't think I understand the question.
Probably unnamed tributary.
Yeah, I don't believe they're named. No, I don't believe there's a name for the tributaries.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Smith, could you talk about the process after tonight? You mentioned a little bit, I mean, this is a preliminary process, but some of these things have not even been designed. Am I correct?
Yeah, I don't think there's any final designs. I mean, I'm sure they've probably have familiarized themselves with the city's requirements for stormwater, but at this point, if they get the preliminary approvals tonight, that kind of gives them a little cover then to actually go ahead and start spending the money to engineer that site. And so at that point, they probably need to reach out to staff a little bit more to really kind of fine-tune what our requirements are to make sure they're designing it appropriately. And so once they have that completed, along with the street design and sanitary design, all that will be submitted to the city as a package for the site development.
And that is, if I could, that is part of our process in any typical project, is once we achieve the zoning level, then we let the engineers loose on the engineered improvement plan designs, which take a little bit to put together and then work with staff on getting those approved. So that is part of our process after zoning, yes.
That's dangerous to let engineers do.
Well, also, before you get the zoning, it's dangerous, so before you spend that money, yeah.
Counselor woman Allen, you have a question?
Well, first of all, thank you for being here. So just to be clear, what the council would be approving tonight is for them to move forward, and it will come back to the council once they have done all the work related to the design, the runoff, the detention basins, the sewer, and the traffic study. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And so I think, I think it's, a better explanation might be that, you know, a preliminary step right now, an approval of this would essentially give them some certainty that as long as they bring back a final plan that meets what the preliminary was and can show that the engineering can serve that site, they've got some certainty that that should be approved.
Then another question is, I know I've gotten some contact from individuals in our ward, I'm sure, sure any of us have, and so I know you've talked about the stormwater for that area, so, which, the way it should be designed is it should, in theory, not impact Covington Gardens. Is that a correct statement?
Yeah, that's correct, yes.
So if individuals are currently having problems with stormwater, can you just tell us where they would go for help with the city? Because I have heard from some people that are saying they, they're having some problems. So I just want to make sure if it's any of you or anyone that's watching, that they would know where to go.
Yeah, and we talked about that as a staff just today. If there are questions, our Public Works Engineering staff is always available to receive comments or questions or concerns about the functioning of any type of stormwater management facility that they're there managing. And they, they do, the city does own and maintain the stormwater facilities that serve the Covington Gardens subdivision. So if there's an issue there, they can contact our staff and report that, and our staff can go out and do an inspection to make sure everything's functioning as it was designed.
So either by reporting a problem on the website or by calling and asking, saying what you've got going on and asking for some help? Okay, great, thanks. And then the other question is, I know too, I've had concern about the streets in Covington Gardens and how the traffic will be able to handle that. I know you're doing a traffic study.
We're kind of off of the topic of this project. Covington Gardens doesn't have anything to do in regards to this project.
The traffic study does.
The quality of the streets?
Yes, depending on the amount of traffic, but you're doing a traffic study for that, right?
So there is a traffic study that's going to be required for the Walnut Hills subdivision. And so primarily, what those would typically focus on is really new major intersections and how much traffic will be flowing out of the site, onto those sites and those intersections to make sure they're designed accordingly. It can look at some of that interaction between the neighboring projects and neighboring subdivisions, but working with the developer, they have suggested that they could add a component of the study to that traffic impact analysis that might look at, I think, speeds within Covington Gardens and how the addition of these units could impact that within Covington Gardens. So I know they've been in touch with our staff to kind of talk about how they might put that together, and I think they've committed to including that.
Agreeable to that, yes. Thank you.
Counselor White?
One more question, Mayor. Thank you. With the basins, whatever they catch and what do they release, okay? Something we haven't really talked about, that you go through the under part of Route C, that there's a conveyance there. What about people that are on down the tributary, and how would that release the water? It could affect homes, backyards, and the way that that works downriver, if you will?
Well, if I could, what we will be doing, what this storm analysis will provide and the staff will review, is it's going to hold back basically all of the water, the impervious more, impervious area because of the streets, the homes and everything. It will hold back that differential water until the storm has passed, and then it will meter that out after that storm. So the main function of the detention basin is to hold back the storm, the impervious area, the differential, and hold it until the main storm has gone, and then it releases that stormwater out. But all of that and those designs will be reviewed by staff. And if you would, just keep, look at our site, our site, and just figure that we're at the bottom of everybody else. Everybody else is above us, so we're not putting any water on anybody. Everybody's dropping water onto us. So we're going to be working with staff to correct any issues that we have there and with MoDOT, because MoDOT's going to want to know what we're doing at that storm basin that are the culvert that goes underneath Highway C.
Yeah, I just, this is a statement for the council. I think there might be some confusion with the preliminary plan. There's, I mean, this design has more in it than we've seen on several other ones that we've already approved for stormwater, and we haven't asked any questions about any other ones. But the preliminary is just so that they can get started. So they're not going to know half of these questions you have until they can design this. So I mean, it's just making it hard on them to keep asking the same question about basins. The city has guidelines that's set, that they have to follow before it's going to get approved by the city staff. So just a comment there.
Counselor Hazel?
I know you guys were cut short by the timer. Moving away from stormwater, is there any additional information that you would like to speak on concerning this?
I appreciate that. I hope we've touched on everything that the council and the public would like to hear, but we're available if there are additional questions from the public or you all. I just, again, want to express our excitement to be here tonight and look forward to partnering with the community and you all to bring this new community. I mean, like, I'm just bursting with excitement, so we all are at McBride. Thank you. It's a big topic of discussion at our company. Thank you.
All right, well, I think we're excited. Thanks, thanks for being here and for all the work. All right, the next step is, we will go, I know we've got some folks signed up, so our process is, we go, the applicant obviously speaks on behalf, and then we go, if there's someone that is in opposition to this, that will be the next speaker. The first, so if there's someone that feels like five minutes is not going to be enough, the first in opposition gets 10 minutes to match the applicant, and then we will go back and forth, pro and con, five minutes. So is there someone that has signed up to speak in opposition? You just state names, sir?
I will not go 10 minutes.
You will be a hero.
I'll try. My name is Chris Baker, and I am a resident of Covington Gardens. My family lives on Southampton Drive, and we've been... My family lives on Southampton Drive and we've been there for 18 years. In fact, we, I believe, were the first house on Southampton Drive. My concern is very simple. Southampton Drive currently is a dead end. Nobody ends up on my street or in my neighborhood unless they have a reason for being there. And that means that it is a quiet, tranquil, family-oriented place. Now regardless of traffic studies, stormwater issues, the plan to send, open up Southampton Drive is going to change, as I said at the zoning committee hearing, my quiet cul-de-sac into a through street. It fundamentally changes the character of our neighborhood. I don't like that. I understand that we've got to do things to bring more housing into Jefferson City. I understand that we need to have a wide variety, a diversity of price points and living situations. But plunking 230 new houses into 80 acres is going to fundamentally change the adjoining area, particularly for the folks who live in Covington Gardens and particularly for those of us who live on my street and those who live off of Leeds. In my corner of Covington Gardens, you don't end up there casually. You're there because you're supposed to be there, because you need to be there or because you live there. Nobody cuts through. Mr. Mayor, thank you for your time. Members of the council, I appreciate your attention.
All right, thank you. Does the applicant have any comments to? All right, is there someone signed up in favor of the project? And if you would state your name, sir? Now we will be at five minutes.
Paul Sampson with the Jefferson City Regional Economic Partnership, 630 Balver Street. As we all know, Jefferson City's had a shortage of housing for a lot of years. Having an adequate supply of housing of all types and across all price points is necessary to support the workforce our local businesses and industries depend on to thrive and grow. In recent years, residential development in Jefferson City has not kept pace with the demand for new housing units. In the last three years, there have been an average of only 21 new homes built per year in Jefferson City. Local employees have to resort to living in other communities to find available housing, making employees, making it difficult to attract employees, difficult to retain the ones that are here, and it also reduces local spending by taking their spending to other communities. The shortage of available homes combined with the increases in construction costs have led to drastic increases in home prices over the last couple of years, making homeownership impossible for a large segment of our community. McBride Homes' proposed subdivision is an excellent opportunity for Jefferson City to quickly make a significant improvement to the local housing supply. Their project will bring 230 homes to the market in just a few years, outdoing, you know, what the, the local development community's done in, you know, probably the last 20 years. They offer homes that are varying sizes and price points to meet a wide range of housing options. The lower, the smaller lot sizes that they're proposing helps to reduce the cost of the lot. That makes those homes more affordable or allows the homeowners to, more money to buy up and put more amenities into their home that they purchase. The project will also have a positive impact to the local economy. During initial construction, it'll provide opportunities for local contractors and suppliers and bring increased local spending. The completed homes will increase the property tax base that funds our schools. The new residents that live in these homes will supply the, supply the workforce that our businesses and industries need, and the additional retail spending from the new residents will increase local sales tax that fund all of our public services. As you consider, McBride subdivision has been mentioned earlier, keep in mind that this is just the first step in a long approval process. Understandably, many of the neighbors have concerns about the development, and I think McBride has gone a long way to address some of those concerns by adding the buffer areas, utilizing a large amount of green space, and planning the landscape buffers. Approving the, the preliminary development plan will allow McBride to take the next step in developing the detailed designs of the project, which will address any other issues and allow them to come back to the city council to get their full development approvals once all the engineering designs have been done. We can't thank McBride enough for bringing this project to Jefferson City and their willingness to invest in our community. Their project will provide diverse housing options, make homeownership attainable for a larger segment of our population, and bring growth as necessary for Jefferson City to continue to be a prosperous community. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone signed up that is in opposition? You can just state your name, thanks for being with us.
My name's Don Hamilton. I live on Liverpool Drive, and I'm not here to lobby against the new subdivision. Instead, I strongly urge the council to send McBride back to the drawing board for a significant redesign. The primary flaw in the current plan is that there are approximately 80 homes, those who are running adjacent to Liverpool Drive, whose main entry and exit to the rest of Jefferson City will be via Leeds Drive, a quiet, narrow residential street in Covington Gardens. Now currently, the only traffic on this street and most of those that connect to it are the relatively few, few people who live on those streets. As presently designed, upwards of 150 vehicles will be using this small street daily as a major thoroughfare to and from work, school, and wherever else they need to go, in addition to the people in Covington Gardens also trying to do those things. These residential streets were never designed to be major arteries for that kind of traffic. It'll be a traffic nightmare for those in the new subdivision as they queue up trying to get out on this narrow street and for those in Covington Gardens as well. And those are tax-paying residents of Covington Gardens. There's been talk of a traffic study. You don't really need a traffic study to know that this isn't going to work. Common sense, plain ordinary common sense will tell you, these streets are not going to handle that kind of traffic. And bear in mind, if and when this mistake is made, there'll be no going back. There's no way to undo it. We're just stuck with it and it's like, oh, well, sorry. Now, I was taught never to come to the boss with a problem unless I also bring a solution. Well, I have one. McBride says they're going to build 230 homes on the proposed site. Now, I don't think that 230 has been carved in stone and handed down from on high. I think, my proposal is that McBride do a redesign that replaces the 80 homes adjacent to Liverpool Drive and fed by Leeds Drive with a smaller cul-de-sac with just a few homes in it that can be supported by that street. And remember, just because 230 homes can be squeezed onto a piece of property, doesn't mean they should be if the surrounding infrastructure cannot support it. And I'm telling you, it cannot. Thank you.
Someone signed up in support of?
Good evening, members of the council and the mayor. My name's Gary Plummer. I'm the President and CEO of the Jefferson City Area Chamber of Commerce, here today on behalf of the chamber and our 900 members. I'm here to express the chamber's support of Walnut Hills, the proposed planned unit development by McBride Homes. The plan calls for 230 single-family detached residential home sites with a variety of models at affordable prices. This development has been designed to preserve natural slopes, streams, and trees with more than 36 acres of open common ground. We're so excited to see the project's scope and how it will positively impact the momentum that you already are seeing underway in Jefferson City's housing market. And we really want to applaud the efforts of your staff and the city council, because you've assigned the kind of, of impact to this issue of housing that it requires. I want to thank some of the public and private partners who worked very hard to make this project happen and attract the, help the business community attract the talent that they need to get their job done. I want to personally also thank the Planning and Zoning Commission for bringing this recommendation to you tonight, and our request is that you support that recommendation. Thank you.
I just want to say, I just want to say thanks for coming. As being a member of the Workforce Development Group at the chamber, I know the need for workforce, affordable housing, so I really appreciate you telling us about that.
Anyone in opposition to the proposal? You just identify yourself, welcome. Should be a clock set up there.
No, I don't. Thank you. My name's David Perry. I live in Rusher Creek, which is right across from the subdivision. I've got some questions, and I don't know exactly who I should direct those to, but I'm here in front of you and I'm going to go ahead, please. Could someone explain why there wasn't so many variances? I just ask followed. Street width, rollback curbs, building setbacks, and sidewalks on one side of the street. You're only developing 44 of the 80 acres. Could you not develop without the variances? Rollback curbs, will this be the new standard for Jeff City, the developers in Jeff City? Curbs keep cars on the road, rollbacks will not. Sidewalks required on both sides of the city, of the, the street for local developers. I believe the city's required that for a long time. 28-foot wide street, why aren't the primary streets 36-wide with parking on both sides? Common ground sounds like a common problem to me. Who will collect the money? That's it, thanks for your time.
Thanks. Someone in support of the, welcome, sir.
I'm Jeff Helscher, Cole County Eastern District Commissioner, a member of the Board of Realtors and a member of the Home Builders Association of Central Missouri. I'm not here representing any of them. I'm here on my own behalf to support this Walnut Hills subdivision. I attend a lot of meetings, as you all do as well, and there's a lot of discussion regarding this, a lot of questions, and it always seems to lead to the housing crisis. So we've got an opportunity here to try to help ourselves. We've outgrown our space and we need to, we've outpaced our housing supply, so here's a chance to address it. Development of this scale will make a big improvement to the housing inventory in a short amount of time. They're bringing housing product that is not currently available to us right now, not in the Jefferson City area. And I'm not inside the Jefferson City, city limits, I'm in the county. This affects us as well, and the economic destiny of Jefferson City depends on our outer communities and vice versa. This would help everyone. These are employees, these are going to be more customers for our businesses. I just, I think it's a good project and support it, and I hope you will choose to do so as well. Thank you.
Someone in opposition. You just identify yourself, please. Thanks for being with us.
Thank you, many of the council people. I'm Lynn Shively. I live in Covington Gardens. And really, I, I don't have a complaint about putting in another subdivision. I think we all agree that housing is an issue in Jefferson City, and this is one way to make a solution. But I'm in solidarity with the last two opposing speakers who said, let's do it right if we're going to do it. We don't have to replace all the houses in Jefferson City with one project. We don't have to have 230 homes on what essentially is 44 acres, not 80 acres. They've set aside 36 acres for green space, and I'm, I'm a conservation volunteer, I agree with green space. But we're not setting that aside because we like green space, we're setting it aside because for one reason or another, it's land that can't be used. So they have 44 usable acres to build homes upon, and the publicity for this states that the average homes per acre is 2.5 homes per acre. Well, that's if you divide by 80. But we're only using 44 acres, and when you make that mathematical calculation, that comes to five homes per acre. That's a lot of homes. We've got variances from the city standards, which are going to make the, the green space around the homes so small that you can't throw a football in the backyard. They're going to have 15 feet of backyard space. Five feet between your house and the property line, and another five to the next, that's 10 feet between houses. That's three steps. I don't have a problem with putting in this, but I would ask that you request the orders to go back to the drawing board with those hundreds smaller homes. The homes are great, they look wonderful on the computer, but they're sitting on a postage stamp and the kids are going to be playing in the street, and you've got a lot of traffic coming through if you look at the way it's designed. So that's a problem. Let's, let's ask them to stick with our Jefferson City standards of lot size and curbs and street width and make this a really livable, wonderful, excellent subdivision. Thank you.
Anybody in support?
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Harry Otto. I live in the Fourth Ward, have for over 40 years. I'm the Western District Commissioner of Cole County, but I'm not speaking for the county, I'm speaking as a resident of the Fourth Ward. I think this is a natural expansion of the footprint of Jefferson City. You look at other municipalities around Jefferson City and they're expanding their footprint and they're getting too close to Jefferson City in many cases, and there's a lot of distance between their city limit sign and anything but trees and grass, but that's another, another matter. So this is a natural expansion, we've got to expand our footprint. We are actually, we're not a decaying city, but we're not a thriving city. And I do follow the stats that come out of the assessor's office with respect to the number of residences in this city and county, but the number of residential parcels in this city is pitifully low in growth, pitifully low. It's, it's, it's scary. I think, I think this development will actually enhance the neighbors to the west, the Covington neighbors to the west and the Covington neighbors to the north. I think this McBride organization is a proven organization. They, they've been successful many places in Missouri, and we're lucky that they're looking at Jefferson City. Our city needs this expanded inventory of family residential properties. We need it. We need to find places for the starter homes, we need to find places for the seniors that are downsizing, we need to find them all, and this is a ticket for that success. I urge you to support this project. Thank you.
Okay, anyone in opposition? State your name, please.
Welcome. Welcome. Hi, I am Kylie Beckman, and I am here in strong opposition of this development. I do not believe enough research was given. If you go to the internet and you want to type in their name, all you will find is negative reviews. There are lawsuits out there, judgments, different things going on. I don't think that enough consideration was given. Also, I think you put that many homes together and it absolutely does not increase our property values, it will decrease them. We'll get crime, we'll get people lack of maintaining their homes, it just happens. I am strongly encourage growth and development in the community, I'm a big part of the community, and I want to see it succeed, but this development is not the proper development for this area and what we should bring to the town. I think we need to look at local contractors, we need to look at local people, we need to find people who are not asking for variances in our current city planning and zoning codes, building setback lines, none of that should have been given consideration. Again, there's going to be development- Again, there's going to be development here, it is fine to build homes here, but we need to do it right. We need to bring the right thing to Jefferson City, the right people, the right contractors, and I just think that it was, kind of jumped the gun before anybody did any research on what these, this project does to the communities that they're in, and what the reviews are, the quality of the homes being built. You're seeing people complain about driveways sinking, houses being poorly built, and homeowners having problems with these homes. And I think shoving that many homes on 40 acres, 230, you, you can't build a quality home for that price, and that's what's going to happen, is these won't last, we won't see the subdivision appreciating in five to 10 years from now. So I think that that needs to be given consideration when we're trying to grow the community as a whole. So, thank you.
Is there anyone to speak in support?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name's Michael Whelan, I'm the Factory Director at the Unilever Facility here in Jefferson City, 2900 West Truman Boulevard. I'm a member of the Workforce Coalition, as well as the facilitator and chair for the Manufacturers' Roundtable. We, over many years, have expressed our concerns, particularly even prior to COVID and through COVID, the concerns with the fragility of the labor workforce in this area. We've identified in many instances that the availability of homes and the ability for, to attract talent into this area has been a concern. So as part of the Workforce Coalition, as well as the Manufacturers' Roundtable, we've had several legs, one of those is housing and the availability for it. We continue to see a workforce that is very fragile in the ecosystem and our ability to run our operations and/or potentially expand further with the fragility of the ecosystem. Secondly, the availability of homes allows us not to attract the right talent in the area. Being in between St. Louis and Kansas City is a great place to be, however, the, or the availability of homes detracts talent from coming into these areas. As we continue to look forward to bringing more talent in the area, skill sets change and increase with manufacturing and its growth. This is one of the areas that we feel is imperative in this community, is to continue to focus on the housing, it's increasing its availability. So again, on behalf of, of myself and the Manufacturers' Roundtable and the Workforce Coalition, we support this project at Walnut Hills, and we hope we do as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a speaker in opposition? If you do state your name, welcome.
My name's Carol Harrison, and I live in Rush Creek Court, first house at, under the, where the water comes through. And I've been there 40 years, almost 40 years. I've lost at least 15 feet of my property from once Covington Garden, Gardens went into effect and those homes were built. I've had the city out there, I've had the county out there, no one has any solutions for me, and I invite anybody to come the next time we have a hard rain. On May 19th, I had maybe a half an inch before the water would have gone in our detached garage. I mean, it is a huge issue out there, not just for me, but other landowners down that creek. I would ask you guys to at least consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor. Really? I didn't catch the name of the street.
Rush Creek.
Thank you. Anyone in support of the project? If you would identify yourself, welcome.
My name is Frank Rysik, First Ward, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Public. I'd like to address the idea of lot size. Anything that can bring down the cost of housing, I tend to be in favor of, and reducing lot size is a good step in that direction. On that basis, I support this project. Anything you all can do to bring down the cost of housing, I would appreciate.
Thank you. Anyone in opposition? Anyone else in, in support? Identify yourself.
Council? Yes, my name is Bob Gilbert. You might know me, I guess, as an engineer here in town, but I do want to kind of start from the beginning and say we have nothing to do with, with the development. I worked for Barland West, but I'm a Fifth Ward resident for about 18 years. I, I wanted to come and lend my support for this, and, you know, I certainly understand some of the comments, you know, made about some of the density, certainly traffic studies and things like that can be done to help, you know, prove out any, any concerns. But I guess as an engineer, that, this, this development looks like it makes sense to me, and I think a few things I wanted to share, I guess, about density. You know, one, I've not been involved at all, but it, it looks like the developer has, has, you know, developed some setbacks and other things to accommodate some of the comments that have been made. So, again, as an engineer, that just looks like it makes sense from what I've seen. Also, maybe, I'm trying not to repeat other, other people's comments that have been made tonight in support, but, you know, density of developments like this, actually as a matter of public policy, is a good thing. I mean, if you think about the efficiency that comes from, you know, streets that are less distance and less to maintain for, for a certain number of homes, the, the tax base can support that. So this is not, I guess, an unusual-looking development in the grand scheme of developments. Certainly in more developing communities, we see things like this all the time, and so I think this, this is a little bit different maybe for Jefferson City. This is not an unusual-looking development, I just wanted to share that, that perspective. We have offices in St. Louis as well, and a family that lives there, the, the smaller lot, uh, uh, density does not give me a lot of pause, and I think the, the diversity of housing options has been mentioned tonight at length, but that is a very, very important element of any kind of investment. You know, we, we employ a little upwards over 70 professionals here in Jefferson City, and I, I am concerned about the young people that we hire and, and come out with good college educations and, and have great incomes, but trying to afford a $400,000 house just seems unrealistic to me. But I'm, I'm getting older, and that, that's just out of my ballpark, you know? But we, we need options like that, even, even in some of the best, you know, paying professional positions that, that we have. Yeah, I'll just end with this thought. I guess the, the decision tonight, I think, again, one of the councilmen described, we're at a very preliminary stage, I think it's a very important element, that there's a lot of things that can still change, and things can be, can be worked on. But one of the main things I wanted to share is, I don't think this is a singular issue decision. You know, we, we, we talk a lot in our community about housing and about being open for business, and, and, you know, investors look at decisions like tonight in, in developing their decisions on, on how they're going to invest in the community, or if they are. And, and I, I think that's a very important element for us all to consider, is, you know, this is an investment in the community, I, I understand their concerns, but all of those seem like they're workable issues to me, I guess as an engineer, but again, I have no part in the project, just wanted to lend my support as a citizen tonight. Thank you.
Others in support?
So, Mr. Mayor, thank you. City Council, thanks. My name is Kent Deraff, longtime Jefferson City resident and currently a Third Ward resident. I'm here tonight in my capacity as Chairman of the Jefferson City Chamber of Commerce Board. I'll try, like Bob, not to kind of repeat some of the other comments, but, but one of the things that I think is really important for the City Council to understand is that the severity of the lack of housing. I think we would all agree that we have a lack of housing. We hear about that, you pick up any newspaper and you, you'll see that, you'll read about it. But more closer to home, my, the, the institution that I work for, we employ about 1,000 people, and it is a very big challenge for us as we attract new talent here, to get them to live in Jefferson City, just because of the, the availability of housing in all price levels, not just affordable housing. I have friends at Lincoln University that tell me the same thing, they're constantly frustrated with trying to keep their new faculty and staff here in our community. I was formerly a member of the Jefferson City School Board, that's been a couple of years ago, but I can remember that was always a challenge for us. We would attract new, and, you know, we'd hire quite a few teachers and faculty every year, and it was always a scramble. As a banker, I follow the statistics, and I can tell you that over the last few years, I've noticed just a, an alarming trend in those statistics. Just record-low inventory, I mean, record-low inventory, record-low number of days on the market for the houses that do come up for sale, and then prices that are going through the roof because of the lack of supply. So, more, I guess more anecdotally, I would just want you to know that it is truly a problem, and it's something that we need to address. We can't look at it as if it's just something that's theoretical. And so we have an opportunity here to approve a project that is going to help solve that problem. I do agree that there are probably some, some challenges with that as they meet the eye, but I appreciate Bob Gilbert and other people who do, do this for a living that say it is, it's not out of the, out of the norm for a project. I would also like to, to let the council know that my colleagues in St. Louis and, and our bank have worked with McBride for decades, and I've talked with them about this issue, and they have no problem with me relaying to you their very strong reference that McBride does a good job and that they're good corporate citizens. So I would like to applaud the Planning and Zoning Commission for studying this and deliberating it, and, and coming to an eight-to-one vote in favor, and I would encourage the City Council to confirm the decision of your committee. And I thank you for your time.
Anyone else in support? All right. I jumped the gun, but you do have five minutes, if, if there are any comments that were made that you want to respond to, or any other final comments?
Thank you. I, I heard a couple of themes, so I'll just try to touch on those. The first one was traffic, and I just want to say, reiterate again, I know it's been said many times, a traffic study is underway, and we have agreed to add a set, that this, our study to include the Covington Gardens impact, so that will be forthcoming, and we will address that as we move through the engineer stage, and it will be brought before you again. So definitely heard those comments, and already agreed to add that to the study. I also heard one comment about, you know, quality issues like that. So we're celebrating our 80th anniversary next year, we've been in business, so going on 80 years. I have been at McBride for 19 years, many of my colleagues have been there much longer. We take customer service and the values of our customers, and delivering on those values and that world-class customer experience, and I don't say that phrase lightly, that world-class customer experience is used every day by us at McBride. When you're as large a builder as we are, we time to time have some issues that we work through with our customers, but we take those very seriously, and we work to address those. We provide a warranty for each customer on the home, and we tend, we again, take customer service and the quality of our product very, very seriously. And it's allowed us to maintain great relationships, not only with the lenders that we have, with title companies, underwriters, mortgage companies, but also all the municipalities and counties that we build in all across the area. So we continue to be building in those communities new projects all the time, so I'm very proud of that and very grateful for those relationships. The la, one of the last things I heard was why some of the variances, and the PUD zoning is really a tool that many cities use to allow that flexibility and give those variances. It allows us to take a challenging site with topo issues and come up with a great design, a great product. So that's the reason for the PUD and the flexibility, and I also heard some discussion in some of the comments about the affordability of housing and the lot size. And that's one of the things that we see from our customers time and time again, is the emphasis is really not on maintaining a large lot for the majority of our customers anymore. They want to put the investment options in the selections of their home and not have to be tied down to maintaining a larger lot. But they do like the green space that we can provide, the common ground in the communities, because that provides their recreation, or really, really good views from their lots, right? Because they're looking at a lot of green space and a lot of trees, so, and they don't have to maintain it. So it's sort of the best of both worlds, that's where we are with home building right now, less maintenance, looking at that nice common ground, and investing more in the selections of your home versus the size of the lot. And we want to bring that ability to the city to allow your customers, your citizens to make those choices as well. So very proud of that. And again, here to answer any questions, I hope I have addressed most of the comments that we heard, the themes that we heard, but if I haven't, please let me know, I'd be happy to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other witnesses, the evidentiary portion of the public hearing is now concluded. Council has, take up associated bill number 2025-010, which is before you. Are there any other com-
I just wanted to add something when you added it, so, sorry. I was just going to, just some clarification, there's a couple of things that were said during the public hearing, just to clarify, just, just so we're all on the same page. I think it was stated that there are variances to the street width and the sidewalk requirements. Those are not variances, that those are being designed to city standards, so just, just for general understanding.
There was also a comment about a cul-de-sac, is that a cul-de-sac, or a, just a termination of a street, a stub out of a street?
Yeah, I think if, if we were talking about Southampton, that street is, is stubbed, so that right-of-way comes all the way stubs is what we would refer to, to this property. That is an intentional design that, that is there for opening up that connection for connectivity in the future. So essentially what McBride has designed to do.
Okay. So again, what I was going to do is say, it is now in front of council, four questions, and you can ask staff questions if, if you have them, or if staff, anything else, Mr. Smith?
Nothing else.
Question, I, I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but just to make sure, the Lylewood development and the, I couldn't find the name of it real, as I was looking, but the one in, on, off Rainbow?
Stand at place.
Stand at place. Are both PUDs correct?
Correct, yes.
Both asked for something a little different than the norm?
Yes, so they each had some sort of deviation from the underlying zoning requirements. And I'd, I'd point out too, those, those, I think, kind of approached this, the, the issue, I think, with, with housing and adding some additional kind of soft density, but they approached it as, from the, from the kind of townhome style, so essentially they have two homes that are, are connected, so it eliminates that 20 feet of side yard in between. So it, it kind of gets to the same place, I think, as this design, but just through a different type.
But still asking for variances, we've still approved their first preliminary.
I guess this is a general comment, and then maybe if the, the developer would want to make any response, but, you know, one thing as a council member that's somewhat difficult is to know when the developer come, when the developer meets with staff and asks for these variances, whether the staff say no or yes immediately, the developer won't do it without the variance. I mean, as council members, we don't know, right? We don't get that information. We don't know if these are deal breakers, if they're not deal breakers, and so on. So that's my general comment.
Are you a resident, too?
Nobody.
Just a comment. Okay, thank you. Any other councilman, council?
I was going to say, a lot's been said about this tonight, unless there's anything else to say, I'd like to take it up and make a motion that we go ahead and approve.
It's already on the table.
Oh, well then, I'd like to make a motion.
It's already on the table.
Oh, never mind then.
It's before you to vote. Seeing no other comments or questions, we will do a roll call vote on 2025-010, that is the Walnut Hill subdivision.
Allers?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Ozleton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Cam, Peter?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Bill Passos?
All right. Thank you. Thanks. All right. Thank you. Thanks. And thanks for everybody that came in and met with us. We, we do appreciate your commitment. All right. That takes us to item seven, appointments by the mayor. There are none. Item eight, presentations from staff consultants and invited guests. I don't believe we have any announcements by the mayor, council, and staff. I may lead that one off. I just wanted to thank Chief Wildy, Chief Schofield. We had some potential activities in our city. I think that both did an incredible job. I think that people that wanted to attend that event had the ability to exercise their constitutional rights. I think our city was very open. I saw law enforcement fire out, and I think kept people safe. So, I just wanted to say thank you. The, I think it was a weekend where everybody got to exercise their opportunities, and it was because, I know you guys planned well in advance, just in case. We will go to administration committee. Councilman Allers.
Settle schedule for July 9th, 4:00 p.m. Cross the line.
Yeah, birthday cake. My birthday.
You will be there at 3:50. Your breakfast will be served.
All right. Finance, Councilman Michael.
We will meet this Wednesday, 4:00. We'll cross the hall.
Public safety.
Our next meeting will be Thursday, June 26th, at 3:30.
We're here in council chamber on 30, on 30, July 10.
Any other announcements? All right. Takes us to consent agenda, item 10. Got two items before you. And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item 11, bills introduce 2025, and we roll on through.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending chapter 19 motor vehicles and traffic schedule O, parking time limit zones by the modification of one spot in the 100 block of West High Street.
Bill would change one standalone parking space just east of Aris's Pizza on High Street, about 90-minute parking to 10-minute parking. This item was unanimous.
Thank you. We'll go to item 12, 12A, bills pending. A has already been done after the public hearing, so it takes us to item 12B, 2025-011.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, accepting and approving the final subdivision plat of Moro Ridge subdivision, the subdivision of the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Smith? Pointer. Getting you guys busy in your department.
Well, we like, we like being busy. This is, this is another final subdivision plat. No PUD, so it's just the underlying zoning for the site, which is RS2, it's a single-family zoning district. It is a previously unplanted lot. It does have a structure on it. I would kind of turn this as perhaps infill potential. The owner of the property is looking to subdivide off the existing house and create three additional lots for new construction along Tanner Bridge Road. Looking through the site, we did identify that additional right-of-way was needed. That right-of-way was dedicated by the plat. The property owner is also applying for a variance to the sidewalk requirement along Tanner Bridge Road. Part of the justification would be that there is no sidewalk in the vicinity, not adjacent, and not really in the near area, and there could be a situation to in the future. The most likely sidewalk construction scenario would be here is a city project that would construct sidewalks along Tanner Bridge. So, the final plat and the variance in sidewalk regulations were reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission and was voted for, or was, motion to recommend approval was approved, and we are recommending approval of this subdivision. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions. All right. Got 2025-011 in front of you for a roll call vote.
Allen?
Aye.
Ozleton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Cam Peter?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Will Passus?
2025-012.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Higgins Asphalt Company Incorporated in the amount of $1,600,843.05 for the 2025 Millen overlay project.
Mayor, this bill would allow for the improvement of about six and a half miles of roadway. It's out of 230 approximately that we have here in the city to be improved with a millen overlay of asphalt. Any questions?
All right. Seeing none, you've got 2025-012 in front of you for a roll call.
Ozleton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Cam Peter?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Ozleton?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
All right. Item B, resolution 2025-5.
A resolution requesting approval to purchase mobile data terminals for fire apparatus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the city clerk mentioned, this is for authorization to apply for a grant, excuse me, natural resources. The intent is to replace the safety servicing at a park. Total project cost is estimated $150,000 with a matching contribution of up to $75,000. Any questions?
Councilman, would you like to lay this on the table?
Yes, I would. Sorry about that. I was just moving, I would move to put that in front of the council.
Second?
Second, Pat.
Got resolution 2025-4. Seeing no other comments or questions, we'll do a roll call vote.
Joe?
Aye.
Cam Peter?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Good state.
Thomas? Thomas?
You gotcha.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Ozleton?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
All right. Item B, resolution 2025-5.
A resolution requesting approval to purchase mobile data terminals for fire apparatus.
Thank you. This resolution would support the replacement of mobile data terminals inside of fire response vehicles. The two primary drivers of this decision are end of service life of the hardware and associated routers, connectivity, and also the ending of the software security support for the devices. So, we were told that those security frameworks would no longer be compliant with IT's requirements as of October of this year. So, we're trying to, to replace these so that we can not have a disruption in the service of these data terminals. Happy to answer any, oh, I should also mention, the funding for this would come out of our fire equipment replacement capital improvement category. We have the funding available currently, and as we've stated previously, we try to keep money in that account so that we can do various equipment replacements. And right now, this is the highest priority. There are many others, of course, that will be coming before council in the future, but we do currently have the funds for this particular replacement. Happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Joe, would you like to lay that on the table for us?
I will move to be here.
Motion?
Second.
Second, seeing no comments, we'll do a roll call vote.
Cam Peter?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Ozleton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
All right. Item C, 2025-6.
A resolution authorizing the city of Jefferson to apply for a transportation alternative program grant for the Jefferson Street side path.
Bremer, welcome back.
Thank you. This and the following two resolutions are transportation alternative program grant applications that were asking for permission or does not obligate us to, does not obligate any funds at this point, just gives permission to apply for the grants. The max for the, for these grants is $600,000. We would have to match 20%, so about $120,000. So, this first resolution is concerning a side path or a trail from, that would extend from McCarty Street, kind of up Jackson, Capitol, and High Street. It would allow for the connection of our Greenway Trail system kind of through Lincoln University up to downtown area and also connect to Capitol Avenue where we have sidewalks and bike, bike lanes that would also connect to improvements going down Chestnut and the River. That is this first resolution. Any questions?
Anyone else?
Just because I hear a fair number of questions about these grants that we apply for are really truly, we can't use these for roads. That's a correct statement, right?
So, any improvement required for the transportation alternative portion of it? So, if it was a curb that needed to be fixed or a ramp to get that trail across the road, then that could be part of the grant. But it's for transportation alternatives, so it's not for vehicles, it's for walk-through bikers.
One other question. If I remember right, our match on this is really using many already existing funds. It's not taking money away from something else.
So, particularly on this, on this particular grant, it's, it's in our, in the, in the area of town that our CBPG funds can be used to match this, this grant. So, there's really nothing directly out of pocket from this.
Is there a map or a set of plans drawn up on this just yet?
Not, not yet, but-
I was just curious. I was trying to put it together in my-
I would say there, there is a, a general scope and a general layout of it. Nothing in detail. It is, it's part, it's been on our act of transportation plan, which was approved by planning and zoning, I believe, last year. So, it is a project that, that has shown priority here for the city.
We'll get it on the table then. Then I'll go.
I moved to approve the authorization, uh, resolution for the transportation, apply for the transportation.
All right, we've got it on the table. Councilman Miller, did you have a comment also?
I did not.
Okay. Councilman Miller?
Is Mr. Bangy still applying for these tap grants? Does he kind of do the legwork on these?
Yes, he is.
Well, I just want to publicly thank him. I mean, he's been very successful with these. They're great for this city, so I'll send him my thanks and thank you to you and the rest of your team involved.
Yes, that, that's great to hear. He'll love that.
All right. You've got resolution 2025-6 in front of you for a roll call.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Ozleton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Cam Peter?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
Item D, resolution 2025-7.
A resolution authorizing the city to Jefferson to apply for a transportation alternative program grant for the Southwest Boulevard side path.
Bremer, any?
It's just a, a brief description of this project. It would, it would, it would take a, they, it would add a connection from essentially our Greenway Trail at Southwest Boulevard, close to, close to the Boulevard, down Southwest Boulevard toward Tower. Any questions?
I made a motion, Mayor.
Second.
I think it would be fair to say we had a question on that one, so there'll be some things that we'll be working with.
There are some right-of-way items and property items on that one that, that we'll have to investigate.
Just want folks on that board to be aware that-
There isn't a sidewalk on the other side either, if I'm not mistaken, is there? Or broken sidewalk at best?
I don't believe there is. I don't think it's on either side, if I remember correctly. I need one.
Okay. You've got 2025-7 in front of you for a roll call vote.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Ozleton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Cam Peter?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
Item E, resolution 2025-8.
A resolution authorizing the city of Jefferson to apply for a transportation alternative program grant for ADA improvements.
Mr. Bremer, you're back.
Yes. This, this tap grant is for ADA sidewalk ramps as they connect to our roadway, mainly in the downtown and south side areas. I really like this, this application as it, even though it's not one designated project going from one point to the next point, it's, we have so many ADA and sidewalk issues as the, as our sidewalks connects, connect to streets at intersections that this project would address kind of all over the downtown and south side area. Any questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Councilman Allers, you have a question?
I have a question, Kyle. Thank you. The ones off of Eastland, I noticed when I walked, some of those mats with the knobs on and stuff like, how does, how do I say to get that in front of somebody just to look at? Are, are, do those come for like tap grids too that, that come in repair, or are these just new ADA stuff?
So, those, those are required at intersections, those, those mats, if you will?
Yep.
Those ADA mats, that it's a requirement at intersections, you know, street intersections. So, if there's some that need to be addressed that are, that are issues, let me know and I'll, I'll have staff. That's all. Thank you.
You've got 2025-8 in front of you for a roll call.
Neely?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Ozleton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Cam Peter?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
Item F, resolution 2025-9.
Supporting a project, project scope amendment for the local tourism asset development grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna turn over to Ms. Sinzi in Neighborhood Services to give kind of an overview of the tourism asset development, what we're gonna be doing.
Thank you. Good evening. I know a lot of you have seen this presentation before, so you'll agree. In 2022, we submitted a grant application for hotel development at the MSP site for the original Conference Center site. We found out that we are receiving $2.2 million for that project after we received, after we released the master developer for that project. So, we shifted it- So we shifted it over to the current conference center site. Unfortunately, the timelines, because the two point two million dollar local tourism asset development funds are ARPA, we only have a year left to spend those funds, so now the conference center development timeline no longer matches with the local tourism grant timeline. So the Department of Economic Development has graciously allowed us to submit a project scope amendment. That project scope amendment is due June thirtieth. It has to address tourism within the, locally, regionally, and within the state of Missouri. So what we're proposing is actually transferring it over to the River Market Development Site as well as Box Creek. The amended scope, again, must target tourism, so we really pulled the numbers from Missouri State Capitol, the Missouri State Penitentiary, the Katy Trail, and also our local park. The proposed scope amendment includes Greenway Trails. We wanted to go ahead and, and jump that two point two million into projects that we already had shovel-ready and also to be able to plug any gaps that we might forecast with, with cost overages that are, that are happening on some of our projects. The, the new part, I would say, of this that we would add, so originally on the River Market, we had to value engineer out some of the trails because of the cost overages that we received. So originally, the current plan is to have the Greenway Trail end here at the sidewalk that accesses the River Market and the restroom facility. With this two point two million dollar infusion, not only can we kind of plug the gaps of our already existing projects with Greenway Trail along Chestnut Street and Box Creek, but we can also connect Greenway Trail up to the Lafayette Street cul-de-sac. That way, we're giving greater access to the River Market. Also, that's, it's, falls in line with the trail design and our active transportation plan. And then if we have future plans to build a connecting bridge over to Depper Cooper Park, we'll kind of have that landing spot to jump off on. Here's Chestnut Street renderings, which I will add that Chestnut Street is getting ready to go out to bid within the next couple of weeks. So we'll see that activity going on as well. Again, we have sidewalk on one side of Chestnut and trail, Greenway Trail that'll connect out here. And Director Bremmer mentioned the Jackson Street, all of this will start connecting and we'll be able to have a, a better trail network in the city. Box Creek, received a tap grant that, that we had also been discussing earlier. And one of these things that we can do is that we can take some of the match that we, that Parks Commission was going to have to come up with and plug in that two point, part of that two point two million dollar. So we're saving the city some funding there by leveraging the dollars and the resources that we already have available on the projects. I have a preliminary budget slide up here, but within your packet, you have a, a little bit more of a detailed cost estimate. So we currently have twelve different revenue sources that are going to this project. Total revenue that includes River Market, Chestnut Street expansion, Box Creek, and the extra River Market Trail to Lafayette. We have ten point nine million dollars worth of revenue resources. Total project expenditures that we have identified so far is nine point seven million. So currently, we do, we are generating some contingency funds, is what I'm going to call them, for any overages that we experienced during construction. But it's, it's going to be a challenge that I'm going to put on myself and our team, is that we try to save as much funding to be able to put back into the general fund or the Parks Commission budget as we can at the end of this project. So specifically for this, for this local tourism project, we have Chestnut Street extension estimated two point four million, Box Creek about a million, the Chestnut Street, Chestnut Street Greenway is about four hundred thousand. And then that leaves the River Market Greenway and amenities for about one point three million, that's flexible. But we, we want to make sure that we, we include amenities, that way if we need to buy park benches or other things that you, water fountains or other things that you see along trail, trailheads that you can, that we can go in and have those eligible. And again, the revenue sources, we are allowed to use Chestnut Street as match. So we're, we're really not asking the council or Parks Commission for additional funding for these projects and hopefully we can return some money to the coppers when everything's said and done. Up on the screen again is kind of our, our project scope, the green lines are already existing Greenway. So the red is where we'd add, so here's River Market, Chestnut Street, and then down here is Box Creek. So using your imagination, you could start connecting to where we can start building out this riverfront trail and especially if we in the future get a bridge that connects here. You'll be able to come off the Katy Trail across the Missouri River Bridge and then not have to ride or walk along the street and you can enjoy access to the river. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all might have about this transfer of funding.
I move to adopt the resolution.
Second. Motion is second, you have resolution twenty twenty-five dash nine in front of you for roll call.
Thomas.
Thank you, Ms. Huns.
Aye.
Young.
Yes.
Allers.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
Oseltan.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Cam Peter.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Mealy. Resolution is adopted.
Alright, takes us to item G, resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract amendment with Garfield Public Private LLC.
Oh. Thank you, so this is amendment number two, this is the city's existing pre-development services agreement with Garfield Public Private. Essentially, that the agreement extends the, the term of pre-development services portion of that contract through September thirtieth of this year and increases the, the project amount under that contract by one point five million dollars. Product that will be given out of this amendment is schematic design of the garage, conference center, and hotel project. That's really kind of all I have, we're going to give it over to, to Luke with J.C. Rep to answer any questions coded a little bit more detail as the city's representative.
Welcome, sir, if you would just identify yourself for those at home.
Excellent, good evening, Luke Holstner with the Jefferson City Regional Economic Partnership.
You've got a couple of friends online that you might want to recognize that have been with us for a long time.
You betcha, so we've got, joining us virtually, Ray Garfield and Mark Buller, both with Garfield Public Private. So they'll be able to help address any questions that may come up as well, so.
And just, they had asked to fly up here for tonight, but we knew we had such a packed agenda that we suggested that maybe they'd do the meeting from Dallas, but certainly be available. So that's why they're not here, just because of the full agenda, so thank you.
Full agenda with a lot of good developments going on, so it's exciting times. So in early January, Garfield Public Private had presented the city with the pre-development services report, so ultimate findings for the downtown parking structure, conference center, and hotel project. So of that report, it consisted of multiple studies, parking study, hotel market study, economic impact study, also led to some conceptual designs, preliminary cost estimates, and a preliminary plan of finance. So that report was delivered in, in, in February and with the recommendation that the next step being the pre-construction services. The pre-construction services consist of kind of a next series of five phases. So you have site new diligence, you have schematic design, you have design developments, you then have construction documents, which leads you into bidding the project and getting a guaranteed maximum price. So shortly thereafter, in, in the month of March, city council approved an amendment one to the contract with Garfield to really initiate the, the due diligence, first piece of pre-construction services phase. So that has been approved and it's underway. That site new diligence consists of some geotechnical work, site surveys, and some other just kind of civil work and civil studies on the site. Amendment two would be to then continue that, that progress on the development in initiating schematic design. Mr. Mullman briefly touched on the schematic design, but, but really it's taking that pre, pre-development report that was submitted in that conceptual design and diving deeper into each of the, the development components. And so it's going to look at the site, the layout, the configuration, a lot more focus on the major engineering components. So structural, mechanical, electrical plumbing, fire, et cetera, those are all going to get dug into as well. It's going to engage both the interior and exterior designing consultants. Garfield, on our behalf of the community, will solicit proposals from hotel brands so that they can help provide recommendations on different hotel brands that would best serve the Jefferson City product. It's also during that design phase going to be looking at, you know, different ways of constructing, but also looking at savings opportunities and value engineering. So still a lot of work, additional work to do on the design phase and schematic would be that next step. You know, it is a critical next step forward. You know, it's going to help us as we continue to identify what the final end product exactly looks like. It's going to also give us a better understanding of the costs and allow us to better understand and build out the plan of finance. And as mentioned, Mark and Ray are, are available virtually to address any questions that may come up, but as well as myself and Paul Missy and Diane Gillespie with the CBV are here as well and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilman Allers, then Councilwoman Allen.
I just wanted to say, thank you, Mr. Garfield, Mr. Buller for being here. This being approved, what was the timeline, do you think, that you'll come back to us?
The, the schematic design phase is going to be going through September, so it's three months.
Three months.
Yeah, no, it's kind of long.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Allen.
But this was related to the parking garage and what we need to do to keep moving forward for the parking garage. Is that not a true statement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And the money that's, it's coming from is parking garage fees? No?
Lodging tax.
Lodging tax. So this schematic is for everything, but it's what we need to do so we can keep moving forward the parking garage because that's the most urgent item.
Mr. Crane.
I would just say, yeah, we're, we're under a deadline with some grant funds that we have for taking down the garage. So the quicker we can keep design moving, the better, so we can get that structure back.
And this time will allow, you know, as Mr. Crane mentioned, the, the garage has kind of been the first domino in all of this that's really demanded at the site. The garage at its current state has to be demolished and, and looking at what is the alternative rebuild of that site? And so that's kind of driven a lot of the, the timing of the project as well as, you know, it's continuing to fail and the, the need to demolish. And I believe the city's, has a engineering firm looking at the, the demolition of the existing garage and, and the timing of that and looking at, you know, minimizing the downtime between the garage being decommissioned and, and being demolished and the new product being able to be constructed.
Councilman Mealy, and then Councilwoman Young.
I guess to piggyback off the Councilwoman Allen's question, the, I couldn't find in the resolution where the funding source is listed.
It's, it's, it's not in the resolution, so the funding source was approved by the city council originally. So it's just continuation of that original approval, so there is no change in the funding source, so there's, it wasn't identified.
So in amendment one, the funding source is listed?
No, no, the, I believe it was in the original approval for the pre-development services.
I'm, I'm just saying in amendment one, the funding source is listed, so I came to this meeting not unsure of what the funding source was.
I see, I see what you're saying, yeah. Yeah, there is no change in the funding source.
With, has the geotechnical investigation been started? Is this?
Yes.
How many, how many weeks are we in?
No.
I can answer that. We'll get back to you. Luke, do you want me to answer that?
Mark Buller.
Sorry, can you guys hear me very well? I don't know if I was not speaking up. Okay. So the, the, the geotechnical services, we're trying to get, they're under contract right now as we speak. I'm, I basically have the final edits for them to get started. I should have that to them fully executed and getting them started within this week. They have a lead time to get them out to the site, I think it is two or three weeks before they're able to actually mobilize. But they will be very soon underway.
The reason I ask that question and maybe somebody wants to comment on this and help me through it is, it seems to me that the cart's a little bit before the horse when you don't have a geotechnical investigation commenced and we're going into schematic design.
Mark.
I, I think that ultimately the geotechnical services is going to, that report is going to be more helpful once they get into a lot further detail than when you get in design development. There is going to be information in there that does inform the designers in the SD phase, but it is not critical at the SD phase because that, that level of detail that is required, such as what kind of paving and what kind of fill for the site is required, those are all very, very technical and, and multi-layered pieces of information that really gets book-borne out, borne out in the DD phase. The SD phase does start to tackle that. It will be important as we get that information in the middle of SD and they, the designers will be able to react to that information and provide like anything that is important from an SD standpoint from delivery. I don't have any concerns right now that they are going to basically be coming, the information is coming after the start of SD.
How long do you anticipate the geotechnical investigation to be?
I think he said it was roughly two to three months, but I'm going to be pushing in on him to get it closer to two months. I think that part of his issue is that he might have to get outside assistance from different companies that he's having to work with their schedule, so we're, we're in the conversation right now to finite, refine that, that schedule as we speak.
Regarding the forty million dollar shortfall that's, you know, made the local news, do you all just want to touch a little bit on how, how we move forward with the schematic design when we're facing such a budgetary constraint?
Yeah, and when the, the initial report was issued, it, and it showed a, kind of an identified revenue source of ninety million and a hundred and thirty million dollar project cost, it was, you know, very quickly known that there was some additional revenue sources that weren't being contemplated that were missed initially on putting together the financial report. And so it was, it was looking at the, the bond revenue models and specifically on the, the parking revenue bond. And so looking at that, and so Steve Lehu has been engaged on the project, looking at helping to, from the bond underwriter's side, look at those revenue streams. They, they identified that there was some additional value there, that was a, a big chunk of, of that additional twenty million. There was also some other identified resources through some contribution tax credits and other programs that we had identified as, as sources to start to fill the, the total forty, but, but basically got us to about twenty. Obviously, we were all very disappointed with the outcome of the legislative process this year, but, you know, did see some pretty good traction throughout that, I think just kind of got caught in the crosshairs of a lot of things going on there that would have been great to see that come across the finish line, and unfortunately it didn't.
Do you plan to try the legislative process again?
I, I think we're going to pursue every option. I think we're going to pursue every option that's out there. So we do have a meeting just tomorrow with Steeple and some of the other kind of financial minds to look at other pathways and additional pathways to close that remaining gap. And part of it as well is identifying through the schematic design and continued phases of design work to look at the project and continuing to adjust the project with the budget as it comes to reality, further down the pathway we get. But, you know, I think the state is a great partner. The state, I think we want to look to them as, you know, how can this become a solution that does serve multiple purposes and look at re-engaging the state moving forward, yes.
Councilwoman Young, and then I think I saw Councilman Thomas's hand up, and then Councilwoman Joe.
Thank you, Luke. I just wanted to say thanks for coming and presenting this information, and I do understand that this garage has to come down. Yes, my question is, has the public been notified of what's going to happen? We're going to lose a lot of parking spaces, so what's the notification to the general public and specifically the downtown area of alternative means of parking?
The city does have a RFP that's out and that has closed, that are looking at bringing in some kind of third-party assistance to help with those mitigation strategies, so helping with that displacement time period to better plan and utilize the parking network and system that is around the downtown area, because, you know, the fact is, it will be inconvenient, just the nature of the beast of, you know, it's a large parking structure in the downtown area that, you know, it's trying to find ways to make that impact less on current parkers and future parkers that may be looking at that area. So the city is working through, I don't know if you want to give an update on that.
So the RFP that Luke was mentioning, we actually have a meeting tomorrow to discuss the proposals on that parking. And the initial phase of that is, what do we do when this garage comes down? It speaks exactly to your question and trying to aggressively answer that question with all the tools that we can come up with, with utilizing existing city-owned lots, potential private partnerships that we can have, and, you know, also, you know, potential shuttle services if we can get those arranged. That is the key initial piece to that, to that, to those proposals. And so we're having a meeting tomorrow to discuss the four proposers on it and try to whittle those down and try to attack that question.
Good deal. So just one more thing, will the, will you make sure that the public be given sufficient notice to, so that they can plan ahead and won't be like?
Yeah, for sure.
So thank you for that.
And that's a good piece to this, as well as that having, you know, whether it's, you know, people dedicated to working with the current leaseholders as well as the businesses that are impacted by the use of parking, to work with them to figure out what their needs are, what are the best alternative interim solutions during the downtime, and then what are their future needs as well? So, you know, post-demolition and into the construction of the new development, you know, having a better grasp on utilizing the network, both public and private parking options that are around, to serve the client needs, which are the leaseholders or hourly and daily parkers.
Okay, so is it safe to say that those people would be included in this meeting that you're holding, Downtown Association? Who would be in that meeting?
Those would be meetings to come and opportunities to come tomorrow is a discussion to try to, try to figure out the answers and the different, we had people propose and we're trying to whittle those proposals down to come to you guys and say, hey, we want this company to help us through this issue.
But then they would be part of the, I think, looking at the different solutions. This is just to pick the firms, still. But they are, you know, part of that review committee as well, the Downtown Association are a member of.
Councilman Thomas, did you have a question or a comment?
Yes, I did. In terms of the schematic design, does that necessarily have any impact on how we proceed with the garage demolition at this point?
We're trying to make adjustments here. Do you have any volume? You might be able to turn up a little bit.
I don't know where. It looks like it's either on or off. If I peek closer, does that help? Can you hear me? Can I get an affirmative sound?
Yes.
Yeah, sort of.
Stay close to the microphone.
Peek into the microphone. My question is, does this schematic design process have anything relative to the demolition of the, of the existing garage? The impact there?
Does this schematic design have anything to do with the demolition of the garage? Sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, it's looking at the future development. The city is working with Barlow West on demolition, the engineering of the demolition. One kind of informs the other, so I think the more that we understand and start to have more identity of the future project, the more it can, I think, kind of inform at the tail end of the demolition engineering of what the future development will build from. So it does not play directly into one, but, you know, they do feed off of each other at the end.
So, Mr. Merritt, I move that we postpone a vote on this tonight to the next council meeting.
So the resolution for tonight, is that?
Postponed until the next council meeting.
Second for that?
Here's your question. Do you have a second?
Well, I'll second that, but I think discuss, more discussion's fine.
Yeah, can you explain why you want to move it? I'm just curious.
I wish you could hear me. Given other topics coming up in other discussions, I just feel like we should and could take the time.
He said he just wants more time to talk about it.
I have a similar concern where, is there an urgency to vote on this today? Do we have to vote on this today? This is a lot of money and we have a lot of things before us, I mean, we just left the conversation in there talking about funds, so I just. Is there an urgency to do this?
Do you want to address that, Mr. Washington?
Me.
Or Mr. Crane?
Our consultants right now are estimating about a 1% increase per quarter.
Correct.
On costs, so the quicker we can get this done. And yeah, the parking garage is a dire situation, so we're trying not to slow down too much because we know the citizens are going to find challenges to our downtown without a garage for too long.
And the further we push this out, the, not only does the cost increase, but then it's also very likely to be additional downtime between garage demolition and construction. And this is schematic design. There's still, there's still a lot to do beyond schematic design, and that will be informed through schematic design, but, you know, halting progress now is, it just ultimately creates a bigger project from a cost standpoint and a more challenging one, that, you know, continuing momentum and continuing the process. And I think in a pretty strategic and thorough way of not moving forward with everything at once, but ultimately in these kind of shorter bursts of design work, gives a greater certainty and clarity that we're continuing to inform the product and the project along the way. But it, I think the goal was to continue to move forward with schematic or ultimately the pre-construction services kind of at the conclusion of the pre-development. So in like March, February, March timeframe, and so we've kind of been slow already to get to this point.
And if I could add, I believe on this agreement, we can, we can ratchet it back or stop if something comes up that makes us need to pause in the future. So I think we can, we can work with contractors. If for some reason something changes our mind a few weeks from now, we can pull that back if that, if that's the concern.
And the other complicated factor, we don't meet again for another five weeks. We don't meet till July 21st.
I'd like to push this forward with the caveat, staff can pull the heat break if they need to.
We've got a motion on the table, so. You'd have to, you'd have to do an amendment to the motion to postpone. So hands down the table, Councilman Michael.
Councilwoman Allen.
Oh, you're wise, let's hear it.
I don't know about that. Just to enter in this conversation from the back forward, timeframe, if everything goes as you would hope, as far as teardown to build, what time, what time of year are we talking about with this guideline or this footprint, if you will, or timeframe?
I think from the demo engineering, I think they were looking at potentially in November, December, starting on demolition, and I don't know the exact timing of the, that process, but it's a three to four months of demolition. And so, you know, what we're trying to get to is how, how close to that product being down and certainty of what's going to be constructed can we be so that we're as close to being able to start vertical construction at the completion of demolition?
I think that's relative, and my concern was this, and I thought I suspected it would be a wintertime teardown, which means wintertime transportation, either a walk-in, city bus, or anything that the city would provide transportation to any of our business owners and their staff during the cold wintertime. My mind's going.
Council, Luke, this is Mark Buller. Can I, can I just add one thing to this conversation, just so you guys have that available for your decision? So in terms of schedule, one of the things that I think is important to note, you know, we haven't really looked at the full picture, but I'm assuming that, you know, everyone's intent is to build a hotel and conference center, and that's hopefully the intended goal. From a scheduling standpoint, right now, we are, we are at a very tight schedule, even if we got started today on SD, to try and make it to where we would basically be opening the hotel in the first quarter, hopefully January of 2028, in order to capture the business that would come from the congressional session of that year. If we continue to push out and delay, the possibility of capturing that business and that revenue becomes less and less likely. So I think that we have a very good opportunity to run on parallel paths, like Luke is saying, the garage demo is working on one path, and this SD and hotel and conference center path is working in tandem. And so I think that we can work alongside each other and try and find some resolution as you guys navigate these conversations in the beginning of this project. And we will have more information from the financing discussion that informs us on how we can proceed forward on the rest of the project. And I think that those are important things, is that it does require a little bit of faith in the process that we are all going to basically be moving towards the same goal and find the conclusion that makes everybody proud of the project that we're working towards within the budget that we all think that we can meet. So these are all things that basically, they're branches and paths that this project needs to go down in tandem in order to basically coalesce all of that information for the appropriate decisions that you guys are trying to make.
Can we get the financial information you talked about where you've gotten to the 20 million? Is that something?
Yep, and like I said, we are meeting tomorrow, so we'll have some updated, it's always fluid on these situations as well, because, you know, financing markets and everything else changed, so it's going off of the information we have at the time, so.
So what's the timeframe for you to sit down with the council and really go over that financing along with the long-term financing? Because here's where I'm coming from, faith is really great, and I do have faith, but I'm also a person that's a very numbers-driven person. So what's the timeframe for us to really get clear information, whether it's an open or closed? We may need it to be enclosed, I don't know, related to the, not just the build-out of the conference center, but then going forward?
And that's going to be part of this phase as well, and I maybe overlooked making those comments, too, that, you know, as you, as you reinforce the design based off of, you know, a more detailed knowledge of it, it's also going to be, the cost estimates are going to be redone, because you're going to have more detailed information, and we're going to continue to work through the plan of finance. But we will, even, even post the meeting tomorrow, we'll have a much better idea that within weeks of taking that and putting it together, we could have that conversation.
Luke, this is Ray, and we had a number of conversations about this, and you mentioned it earlier, delaying this by a quarter is, is probably an increase in excess of a million dollars in the, in the total budget, just looking at inflation nationally. That was one of the key items that we all thought would be, you know, beneficial to get this, the schematics, which are necessary and will help us do some value engineering as well, to carve back that $20 million gap that we saw, because we think that there's some significant savings that we'll begin to see in the schematics. So I would encourage you to, to think along those lines and before you do, vote.
You know, I think likely, I'll just speak for myself, of course, I do support the conference center and the concept, but I do need, as we keep moving forward, I do need to have some of that information because, you know, when's the next 2 million or whatever we're going to be asked to approve? And it's not that we don't want to do it, it's just that we need to see what you have so far and really have good information of what you have so far for us, because we do have, you know, it's just, just business, and that's what, that's for me, what I need to see to keep, keep, keep moving forward, even though I do support it, I'm just trying to tell you what I need to see so I know that we do have good plans for maintaining the conference center. And I've at least made a commitment to my constituents that I will see that we're not spending taxpayer dollars and that we're, we're not obligating, you know, unreasonably our future generations. So I just really want to encourage us to have So I just really want to encourage us to have a meeting where we have that information and you help us, help us help you.
You bet.
Help us support you. Um, I don't have a problem with us moving forward on this because of the, of the, of sort of the timing of it and what we need to do for the parking garage. But I would in the future, if we don't have more information like that.
You bet.
I'm just one person though.
It, it will, those pathways are gonna get more and more clear throughout this, so, look forward to that, certainly. And it's always gonna be a challenging thing. This is a big project and it's, um, it, it can be, um, you know, kind of difficult to get past the, 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 the major milestones we have to get through. But knowing that, you know, through these steps, it's gonna become more and more clear. There's gonna be more understanding and there's gonna be more confidence based off of more information that we have of the project itself, um, that, uh, you know, we'll continue to engage and, um, you know, look forward to that.
One, one item I'd throw on the, uh, existing parking structure, which means that if there is, uh, you know, what does that site look like once that, once the garage is torn down? You know, is it, uh, you know, do we have to put it back and invest dollars in surface parking lot? Or do we turn it over to, uh, the, the, um, the team here when it comes to the hotel and convention center? So, you know, that's, that's an item that we're working through on, um, that deconstruction side is what does the timing look like? And is that, does that timing look like, oh, there's, there's gonna be a significant gap? If so, then we may need to invest, uh, dollars in that site to make sure that there's certain, it can at least be used for surface parking lot until, um, until there is the funding or the ability to move forward with, with, uh, the convention center.
Councilwoman Joe?
Yeah, um, Councilwoman, could you tell us some about the, is that there, there is not a front emergency brake? What does that look like?
I believe it's a 30-day notice and, and, uh, for cancellation. But essentially, if we're at a point where you say, okay, stop working, um, something's changing, essentially we can de-authorize them to, to stop working. So there could be some lag time where, where some fees are built up, but I'm, I'm kinda going off of my head here. I think it's a 30-day cap. Profile of that. Uh, but also, you know, uh, this is really a partnership. And so I think we would lean on those relationships to make sure that no one's spending money that doesn't need to be. So that way that. Way in the future as well. Kind of a practical matter that goes along with that as well.
Okay, so if I'm understanding correctly, if there is further discussion on this and the city at some point decided to say, stop working, we, we could give a 30-day notice and then we would not continue to.
Correct.
I'll withdraw in a second.
Amelia?
Thank you, Mayor. Just an observation, uh, in listening to my colleagues tonight. It appears to me like my council colleagues want more information. They want to be more involved. And I would recommend that to have a successful project. I did have one quick question that's kind of random. In this document of fees or of costs, there is a owner furniture and it looks like it's related to about $17,000. And based on the information here, what it looked like to me was like a mock-up room. Am I anywhere close to what that is?
Mark.
So that is an anticipation of getting a procurement agent involved to start trying to build a model room in the DD phase. They would be getting involved, we'd be procuring them, and that might be basically one month's worth of fee. If we don't get them on board, that particular, uh, two line items for FFNE and OSNE would not be spent during this phase. The goal is to get them on board, to get them started, because there are lead times associated with all of those pieces that we would have to procure to basically build out an actual room. The not in place, this would not be, you know, in place. It would be at a, a, a place that we would work with the city in order to find, um, any locations that they have available either within the city or, you know, that you guys might own and have, uh, available for free use. Or you might have to find a place that we are building it where there might be some money spent in order to house it. So those are all things that would be answered through all these processes as we go forward. Um, but that's just down the anticipation and the desire to try and get a procurement agent on board.
It, it is very standard, uh, as Mark just described, part of the process. And of course, it's, it's down the line. It's during the design development stage. Um, but building a model room is really essential, um, to, uh, essentially source out, uh, once the architects have designed that room, um, that to, to, to build every portion of it, uh, every outlet, I know where the televisions are going, know, 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 uh, where the, uh, air conditioning, uh, systems are, et cetera. So you build that one room and it can go into a corner of a warehouse somewhere nearby. But all the workmen that they're gonna be working on developing the hotel will have an opportunity to, to see it, uh, to, and to know exactly what they're gonna be doing once they actually start building 200 rooms in a hotel. But, but that, that's the purpose of, of that particular item, as Mark said.
All right. The second was withdrawn, so what we have in front of us is Resolution 2025-10.
I had delayed this resolution before our council for a vote.
Second. A motion and a second. Any other discussion on 2025-10? Do a roll call vote.
Young?
Yes.
Pollers?
Yes.
Allen? Housleton?
Aye.
Joe?
No.
Cam Peter?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Seven ayes, three noes. Resolution's adopted.
All right. If you will indulge me, I just wanted to go back up and stick through an item on item number nine. There was another event in town on Saturday and I just wanted to compliment Parks. And I know that Councilwoman Young was there, Councilwoman Allen was there, Councilman Pollers, if I missed anybody, but we had a Juneteenth celebration in the city. If you want to just take a second, Councilwoman Young, and again, Park staff did an amazing job, so if you would just pass that along. But Councilwoman Young?
Yes, I just want to also thanks Park, thanks Park for that event and that space. Um, the event itself was very well attended. We had lots of vendors there, what they did. And, um, I just want to thank the city for taking time to recognize Juneteenth and what it stands for on my behalf. Um, we all know the history, so I don't have to go into all of that, but I just want to say again, it was very well attended and very well put on. And, uh, it looked like everyone there were enjoying themselves and appreciative of the event. Thank you.
They moved it down to the ROTC building and seemed like it worked really well. You know, it seemed like a lot more space for vendors about how parking went.
I agree.
Did you have a comment, Councilman?
Just, just that, that, they had just an amazing saxophone player there.
Jim Cunningham, he's been a few times. So if you come back, you all need to go visit him.
All right, thanks. Thanks for allowing me to go back. We do have item 15 in front of you. All in favor?
Aye.
We need, those are the close measure, we do need a roll call soon.
Pollers?
Aye.
Allen? Housleton? Joe?
Aye.
Cam Peter?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We have no new business, no unfinished business. Before I jump, we're gonna ask our clerk to read the statement.
The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the public session pursuant to Section 61002, one of the revised statutes of Missouri. Going to close session to discuss the following: Attorney-client privilege subsection 1; real estate subsection 2; and negotiated contracts subsection 12. Your motion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that the meeting be adjourned and we go into close session.
Thank you. We'll do a roll call now.
Allen? Housleton?
Aye.
Joe? Cam Peter? Lester? Michael? Mealy? Thomas?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Pollers?
All right. All right, we'll move across halls soon as we get to.